Mr. Council President.
Yes.
And Council, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So this afternoon, I think Joy was interested and we had the team were interested in talking about a few things.
Yep.
We hope, we wanted to get started with Kelly here to talk about the school budget.
Sure.
First, and then we want to roll into election boards to have a request. I have a couple of other items relative to a summary overview of where we are with the budget, and then of course we're looking to Council for your decisions on next steps so we can wrap this up and tie it all up and bring it back to you. But with that, I know that we entered some discussions, there were some questions that came up relative to the Board of Education budget, the blueprint versus the supplemental request, specifically I know Council you took action on CIP request, which we can talk about through this process, but also you were concerned about specifically new positions, and specifically in new positions, those are required by the blueprint versus those that were put in the supplement. So Kelly's here to answer questions.
Thank you.
Help us get through it.
So, so probably it was sort of my idea for you to be here, so I'm sorry.
You know I would be here.
Okay, I know. So we got, we got, we got jammed up a little bit on these positions, okay? And we got sort of, so, so what I, what I would like to do, if it's okay with everybody, let's kind of start at the bottom, the blueprint, the blueprint requirements, to make sure that everybody's on, on the same wavelength on that.
Okay.
Okay, so, so Mr. Vice President, you want to go ahead and sort of read and make sure we've got everything straight on and everybody's on board, which we've already done this, but we want to make sure that Kelly, if there's any information or what have you.
Can Kelly give me an information?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah.
I've got that.
Yeah. And we'll check, we'll check all these off, okay? We'll start off with special ed coach.
So, so I guess our, our understanding on these, on these, it's 12 positions, special ed coach, the career ladder coordinator, on down through the English learner teacher and early childhood supervisor, that, that these are, these are positions that would be, that would be covered by the, the county required Kerwin funding and in combination with the state blueprint funding.
Right, so can I back up just a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
To help you understand how we do this. So, we do our budget in October.
Right.
So when we did our budget in October, we look at our September 30th enrollment. So the positions you have at the top were our development of a budget that was presented in December, okay? And based on that enrollment and based on the needs that we saw at the time, that's where those top positions came from, okay? So that's your EL, you had your two ELL, EL teachers, and that's because we had 104 students enroll in October that we didn't have in our September 30th enrollment, and we knew that was gonna, most of them are secondary, so they're coming to us non-English in high school. And we had a student enroll in, in October who needed a sign language interpreter, we're making do this year, but it's not in our budget this year. That's not something you foresee to happen, but, and then the speech and special education, that was because of the increased hours we were seeing off of COVID and some of the things that kids were starting to be tested and so, that top section came from there. Then of course when we get all the requirements of the blueprint, and we start learning more in December, January, February, of all the things that we have to have done within the next two years.
Right.
You know, you gotta have all this done within the next two years, so that's when we started looking at, okay, what are the things that we're gonna need to be able to meet those requirements under the blueprint, blueprint Kerwin, House Bill 1300, whatever you want to call it. And let's just take the first one, pupils, it's either a people personnel worker because they work with the family to help them connect them with services, or a social worker, you know, one of the things that the blueprint requires is wraparound services for our kids, so we're gonna be working with community partners. One of, there's a couple of positions that we didn't put in our budget because it's coming from, from the blueprint, like the community after-school coordinator. We have to have a nurse in our after-school program in Easton Elementary School every day after school. So there's some positions that aren't in this local budget that we're gonna need for blueprint.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
That are required by law.
Yep.
And the ones that were really required by law, we put, we're using our blueprint money to do, but these were some that we know we're gonna need just to get ourselves caught up. So, social worker was one. Now, with that said, here's something that's, that could be done. You know, I meet with Maria Maguire and Linda Webb every month. We have lunch and we talk because we serve the same families, right? So, I remember six years ago, I went to Frida, because we start serving children at birth, and I, we were serving about 56 kids from birth to age two. And Susan Hiles, our teacher, she was working with them, so she assesses them when she gets the referral from the doctor, something is not developing correctly, we do the assessment, then we do, we provide the services. So she's a teacher, but not like a classroom teacher, you know what I mean? It's more one-on-one, or she gets them hooked up to services. Well, about six years ago, we saw that number climbing drastically, to the point where we were almost up to 100, and we needed more help. So Frida and I talked, and she helped us get another infant toddler person, it's not in the school budget, but it's, it's, it's like a, it's like an MOU or like an agreement we have with the Health Department. So that's something we could do with social workers, because ultimately, you know, what we want is our families to get hooked up to the community services, because it's, sometimes when you have a child in need, it's not just the child that needs, it's the whole family that needs. They're only with us 180 days a year, six hours a day, there's another 185 days out there, you know, that they're not, and a lot of times, once you get into finding out the root cause of any child that might either be behavioral, or they're lacking in attendance, or discipline, or academics, sometimes you find things happening at home, you know? And, and that's why you need to make sure you're intervening and getting to the root cause. So that, we're asking for because we also know if they're not with us, present mindset, they're not gonna learn, right? So we know we have a lot of work to do, because to get them CCR in 10th grade, we have a lot of work to do from birth through 9th grade. Can't just wait to 9th grade and have everybody ready to roll. So the special ed coach, that position's in there for the pure fact that we are on a fast track, according to the blueprint, to try to intervene earlier with our students to start getting more kids to exit special education, or to get some of the, to intervene earlier before they become, get into special education. So these, these two people that we identified goes right into that philosophy of the blueprint, intervene early, work with your teachers, work with your teachers on best strategies, but also work with your special ed teachers in really making sure that we're working towards compensatory education to get them to exit. So if you look at the blueprint, and you look at the trajectory, you know, the goal is, is to intervene as early as you can and to get more, and we've had that happen. I had a parent come to me one year, it's been several years ago, who, she's a perfect example, her child was in special education up until second grade, exited, and then in sixth grades and gifted and talented. So it can happen, you know, because developmentally, there just might need, there may need to be some things in there to help the child learn to compensate for either a learning disability, or they're just developing at a slower rate. So we just need to get them where they need to be. Now that's not all students. Now, if you're bound born with, as Down Syndrome or intellectually disabled, you're not gonna make that, that leap. But that's what the special ed coaches are, and also, we want to keep our special education teachers. And what's happening is, we're, we're having some special education teachers flip to county to county, and that's causing us, we're seeing that in our, our HR. So we feel like this would also help to keep them more focused and staying here, if they have more support. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Behavioral specialist goes right back to that PPW. We have a, we have one behavioral specialist in our district, we need more, because we have kids that have really been traumatized, I'll be honest with you. And I was just sharing with Mr. DeVilio, that we have this behavioral specialist that we have now, it's for special education, it's to do some of those behavior plans with students that might have an individual education plan, but we're seeing some students that aren't special education that need some behavior intervention. And, you know, that's another example of maybe with the Health Department or Social Services, us working together to see if we can figure out a way to make that happen. I'm all about community partners, you know that, and we have fantastic relationships. But that's something that's really needed. We're seeing now, as I just shared with you, you know, we had four bomb threats in Easton High School, we caught all four, all four we caught, they're not who you think they would be. There are kids that get straight A's and B's, not one discipline referral, so some kids are acting out, some kids are anguish inside and I need attention another way. But it's disruptive, right? It's disruptive.
No, hugely, hugely.
So can I ask a question with that, with that example? What, what is the consequences of me throwing a bomb threat?
So if there's a bomb threat, several things happen. They're arrested for threat of mass destruction, which is a very serious
Right.
charge.
Right.
Most of the time referred to GJJ, due to mal justice, to be honest.
Okay.
They're, they're suspended and put up for expulsion.
Okay.
Now, with that said, you're still, you're still responsible for educating them, right? So we don't, what we do is normally they don't go back to their school. We have to either do a tutor or alternative, or some kind of education.
And a
It could be virtual, you just can't kick heads out.
So when you expel them, you still have to be with them?
Yeah, well, you still have to provide them an education.
Public education.
Yeah, gotta provide them public education. And then we also make them pay restitution. So, so they'll have to pay, like, how much does it cost for the drug dogs to come? How much does it cost for the bus drivers to come in if we have to evacuate to a different site? Now, the law says we can only charge them up to $2,500. It costs us about $7,000.
But the law would say to you, if that child is, you know, 17, 18 years old and is a senior and did that, and that, and that child are, would be in jail, we still have to educate them?
Oh, absolutely. We educate the students in jail now, absolutely. They have a tutor that goes to the jail.
Yeah, the young girl that get her degree while in detention center.
Yes.
Last year.
Yes. So, what I'm saying to you is, we do, do all of that.
Which explains why the budget is so big. When you have to educate.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yes.
To help educate myself.
I know.
Does it make sense to me? It does make sense to me in a certain way. Don't, don't get me wrong.
I know.
But, you know.
It's the law.
Right, I'm just.
Prostitution.
Yeah, it's constant. So when we start at birth, and, and we do, and I'll be honest with you, we're a very small community, we're very blessed, because we have doctors contact us right away, or have parents, you need to go to the school and go through the child find process and get your child assessed. We start immediately, because there's some things that we can intervene early, and they, they don't have, they don't need any special attention if we intervene early. But we also go to 21 if they have, if they're on a certificate of attendance and they have special needs. So we're talking birth through 21, including the ones in jail, we do it all, that's what we do. So, um, okay, go ahead.
My question is this, looking at the same, the same sheet here. The heading for blueprint is the third, the third column, the row, if you want. So you mentioned the social, the social worker and the behavioral specialist, those aren't in blueprint as a required position, correct?
Well, they're, they're not specifically written in blueprint, but again, what I'm saying to you is, if we don't have the kid in school with full attention, we're not gonna be able to meet the blueprint requirements. So when you think about a social worker and a behavioral specialist, it's helping us get all the kids ready to learn, and getting them to school, in school, to be able to meet the, does that make sense? So those, those were two positions that to me were, we have seen a spike in, in referrals, and, I mean, right now, we have, we have now seven mental health community partners. We used to only work with the SPS. Now we work with six others.
Four seasons.
Yeah, we do. We, we have a waiting list.
So, and then, and then that bottom row.
Then the bottom ones.
The, the 816, is that 816 captured in your Kerwin money? Which one are you looking at?
That one there? No, those, those are not. Now, some of them might, some of them, parts of some of them might be.
Can we, can you, do you know which parts are in, are captured in Kerwin of the 816?
So out of this money here that's in our budget that we've presented to you, these, these positions are not in the money that we're using. The money that we're using from the Kerwin is for the salaries to increase, and also for some of the positions that aren't in here but are required in Kerwin, like the community, the community, what's that person called? Community school coordinator, a nurse, there's, let me think of a couple of other positions, there's a couple of other positions that are in there. Implementation coordinator, some of those are not on this piece of paper. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Hi Kelly.
Hi.
So, all of this 1.474 million dollars, not all of which is due to the blueprint.
Correct.
Is it the supplemental? None of these monies, other than, other than maybe a small percentage of it, is within the increase in the Kerwin funding that you're gonna receive for the next fiscal year?
Correct.
So, to me, it's very troubling, especially with those 12 positions at the bottom. If they are required due to blueprint, they should be covered with blueprint money. I mean, they built it for that reason, so what went wrong? I mean, that's another almost million dollars, I mean, if you, you know, you're putting, in the middle section, you're putting pandemic-related, and that, you know, hopefully is gonna be something that's not forever, right? So we talked yesterday about possibly putting those in the Health Department's budget or something like that, so that it wouldn't become a part of quote-unquote maintenance of effort and, and change the curriculum. But I'm really, really troubled with the fact that it's over $800,000 a position, that you're telling us a requirement to the blueprint that aren't funded under blueprint with a huge increase that's gonna come every single year.
Okay.
I don't understand what went wrong.
Okay, well, let me first clarify. These positions on this paper under blueprint are not required in blueprint as a position. They're required, blueprint is requiring us, for an example, let me use career ladder coordinator. Blueprint is requiring us to get every instructional assistant with an AA degree or a certified, a certification for early childhood. They're requiring all the teachers become nationally board certified. They're requiring, I mean, there's a lot of requirements. Those requirements are in blueprint. I only have two people in my HR department. With those new requirements, I'm saying I need a person to help with that, to get that done.
You can't just assume that their teachers are gonna do that on their own.
That's why I'm troubled. That's actually many years of research in all the different departments.
That's correct.
They didn't.
They didn't get it through.
They didn't identify these positions.
They did not.
And I feel like, you know, as the schools were following along, I assume, the different boards of education, they should have been there. Again, this is past test, but maybe you need, need to go to the legislature and say, y'all didn't get it enough, it needed to be a higher amount. I'm not gonna be thrilled that in fact it's a higher amount, but, and you've heard me say this for the last couple of years since Kerwin came along, we shouldn't have to have this discussion every year. If it's required because of blueprint, then it should be funded under blueprint, and they got it wrong.
I, I totally agree, and we did go to them. I personally testified as BZAM president, which is superintendent's association, we let them know that we would not have enough to get all of this done in the timeline that they want it all done. I mean, that's a huge, it's a huge undertaking. Do I agree that some of it needs to get done? Absolutely, don't get me wrong. But, especially when I took my eighth graders down to Junior Achievement Career Fair and found out that every one of the trades makes $60,000 or more, I think I sent you that text, I was just like, oh my gosh, no wonder I can't find teachers. But you're absolutely right, Laura, I, I understand what you're saying, but I want to make sure that you guys understand what I'm saying. These specific positions are just not like written in the blueprint, but some of the requirements in the blueprint, I know, I can't pile more on to people to do, therefore I would say that because of the requirements of the blueprint, I'm gonna need another person in HR to help me get this done.
Yeah, I'm with you.
And you need to keep squawking to them, you need to be contacting the legislators, and, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, the state is the one who passed this. Look, the counties are on the hook, you know, as a basically 50/50, obviously we know Tompa County funds, you know, over 70% of it, but generally it's 50/50. This was, you know, what Miko said a couple of years ago, was if the state is requiring this, then the state should pick up the additional expense. If they'd gotten it this wrong, and for us, we're talking about, we would have gone up, what, $3 million with Kerwin, and you're asking for another two, the vast majority of it is due to the things that you have, that you have to do, then, then somebody should be putting in legislation to, to say, you know what, state, you didn't get it right, and after the three years of Kerwin, then they had a year, and I attended every single one about the funding mechanism and heard the conversations of how to pay for it.
Well.
And they just, right.
I am meeting with Rachel Heiss, not me personally, but all the superintendents, just so you know, we are advocating, all the superintendents are meeting with Rachel Heiss, Brett Kerwin, and Ike Leggett on Friday, and again on May 14th. So we have not stopped requesting more funding to get this done, just so you know, because it's a lot of accountability.
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, I'll finish up with that. I think all we, we were interested in knowing is what was mandated in Kerwin for, for this fiscal year that we're going into. And if you're saying that the 816 is not mandated, but you need them to get ready for Kerwin, then that's, that's, that's the distinction that I needed to hear.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Go, go ahead, Mr. DeVilio.
And so let me talk through this for a second, then you tell me if I'm right or not. So we're, we're looking at this sheet, there's 23 positions, one and a half million dollars. The bottom half, there's 12 out of the 23, and 816,000 of it, that you have to hire up, you need that money to implement the blueprint requirements. So then, then I'm looking at 11 employees, or 11 new positions, and about $600,000 due to changing demographics and mental health of the students. Out of those 11, we're looking at shopping just three out to a separate, pulling it out of the school budget to stick it over in another way so that that way we're not contracted services. And when I think about what has happened in the last couple of years with education, the mental health is not gonna just snap back, because we're talking about fourth graders, fifth graders, sixth graders, we're talking about seventh, eighth, ninth graders, we're, these kids are gonna be in the system for a while, it's gonna take some time to settle things down and get them back on track. And I'm concerned with, I want to make sure that you're robust enough to handle that, but, but not too much, because hopefully we'll, mental health and things will calm down, but I, I think, I want to make sure that the educators, the administrators, and the students are safe right now, if there were any outbursts, if there, if, if that happened. And I, when I look through this, the behavioral specialist would do that, they would be able to immediately address the situation, so then, so you're doubling that from what you have. The social workers.
That would make sure that every school has one, if we did that. And that's my goal.
That, okay, then I, I'm.
And that, that was a goal.
Yeah.
To try to do that, to, to make sure that we had that in place, because relationships is huge.
Yes.
When you're trying to de-escalate a situation, if you already have a social worker that knows the family, makes it so much better to be able to handle the situation. And also our administrative interns into APs, because then it's a whole nother level and a whole nother level of training.
Okay.
And that's huge.
I forgot about that.
And that's in my budget.
Yes, I remember that being in there.
That is well.
Okay, so you really are addressing the safety issue, the educational issue, and the current standing mental health issue, which leads to safety and downgrades education.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and you know, and I just want to make sure that you all understand that the positions, there are some positions required in blueprint, and they're in here, but they're in blueprint money, not in what we're asking from you. These are positions that I know that.
That are coming over here.
Well, that we're gonna need to start working on.
Right.
Because you can't, you can't just do it overnight. If everything has to be done by 2026, I know that sounds far away, it's really not, especially when you're thinking about having to ramp up all your curriculum, get all your teachers nationally board certified, you know, the things that you have to do, you, I need some help doing it. Now, I won't be here, but whoever's gonna be here, I, I know that these are the needs that they're gonna need. And, and the EL, English language learner population, I put that down at the bottom, it probably isn't blueprint, but, you know, the bottom line is to get them CCR ready by 10th grade, it's not gonna happen if they enroll in 9th grade, you know? So I just see that population growing every single year, so I know that's something we're just gonna need more people to help us with. It's, it's difficult.
Okay, two further questions when I get.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Laura.
Okay. So, one, and, and again, I've said this before, you know, one, the main goal of Kerwin was to start taking, taking our teachers, far and away, I mean, we love all of the staff that, that works, but ones who teach our kids are the most important, and that was the premise behind Kerwin, is to get them to, you know, whatever, 60,000 or, or a certain higher level of staff. So when we're doing the increases right now, the teacher increases should be higher than the rest of the staff. That was the purpose, is to start spreading those out in, in order to incentivize people to become teachers. So, I haven't spent enough time to see if everybody's getting the same percentage increase. And look, I understand when we're doing salary increases too, it is hard to find people, but there should be a differential between what we're giving the teachers and what we're giving the rest of the staff. So if we, you know, we're talking about going up about $5 million, which is a huge increase, like a 10% increase in this budget. That's going to be on the backs of our taxpayers, period. We don't have it in the budget to do this, anything additional that we have to give the schools, and it will be every year Kerwin goes up significantly. If you then have to do supplemental budgets of one, two, and three million dollars every single year, you're starting to talk about putting, you know, and we have a sheet on this, you know, on average $300,000 home, you know, an extra, with a two and a half cent supplemental, I'm not sure if that gives us enough money, you know, $122 for a $300,000 house, two and a half cents might not be enough, but that can be equal. So what I guess, I'm coming back to the question is, I, I would like it if you could come back as we're going through public hearings and whatnot, and find places in the budget where you might be able to find more savings. Okay, maybe I can't increase some of the staff 6%, maybe we're only gonna be able to do 4% in order, in order to pay for some of these things you have in the supplemental. That's one question to, to, to marinate on and think about as we go through this budget. And if, you know, this is a million and a half dollars, what could you live with? Because I can't know that we're just gonna all say, yes, we can do all of these things, plus the CIP, plus the other $500,000 and other supplemental, plus the capital expenses with, you know, school roofs and things like that going on, and the ongoing debt service. It's a lot, Kelly.
Mrs. Price?
And we need help, we need, we need some help and some prioritization, if you can.
If, if, if the 6% on the table is just pegging with inflation, and we need to do more for the teachers, what would you like to put on the table?
Oh, I, I don't have a certain percentage, I'm just saying, you have different levels of, of staff, and I know that we need to do adjustments. But it, it is, the whole premise behind this was to, is, is to stretch that differential in order to incentivize, and I remember, it was two or three years ago, years zero of Kerwin, where what we were required to do to get the matching funds from the state was to do 3% for the teachers. And it didn't go that way, everybody got 3%. And I said something about that because that wasn't its purpose.
If, if you go through this.
And are there, are there other things in the budget, and you know, I like to talk about zero-based budget, and right now it seems like whatever's in our budget, we, we accept, okay, fine, none of that should go away, well, maybe because we are. Maybe because we are migrating towards Kerwin and different things, and we have different needs, maybe some of the other things in the budget should be looked at going, you know? Maybe we, maybe this, these positions, these twenty-three positions have more priority than something else that's already currently in the budget. And try to compromise and split the difference with us a little bit.
Okay, all right, so we're at where we're at. Thank you, Laura. I appreciate that. You know, I, I think everybody does agree with where you're headed with this, and, and so does Kelly. I'm not speaking for her, but she totally understands what we, we, we're getting at. Kelly, I, I think you have done an excellent job explaining this and helped me understand this. Okay, so I'm gonna ask you a, a question. You've told us your needs and your, and your wants. So, so let me ask you just a, a broad question. So you're asking for two EL teachers. You're asking for four.
And, and, and so what I'm telling you is that top section.
Right, right, yeah.
Is, is the priority right away.
Yeah, yeah.
The middle section is, is a true need because of where we are. And the bottom is what we're gonna need to do to get the blueprint implemented.
Right.
So that's my tier.
Right.
Because you asked me to come back with that.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. So would, would you, would you be, would you be open, and I'm just asking a question, and, and counsel can, you know, jump in on this a little bit, to, to help massage this? Could, could we live with EL, two, two teachers for now? Can, can we live with, I love Cory's idea yesterday about, you know, can you work with us that, that, that the, the Health Department helps us with, with the one, one hundred and ninety thousand? The Health Department, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna work with, see, see if that works with her.
Or Linda.
Or Linda, I'm, I'm sorry. Right, Linda, yeah, either one. And, and for now, because we can build from this, other councils can build from this, can you live with three coaches, instructional coaches instead of five?
Yeah, absolutely. And then we, we can see where.
So where we're going with this.
That we can, we can, yeah, I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, yes, we can.
Okay, okay.
So is this a priority tier? You just said that, Kelly. The top section, the four sixty-eight is your number one priority, the middle section the second. And the other ones, maybe you don't, maybe we don't do them this year. Maybe we just do a couple of them this year, and then next year, look at that bottom section. That one here, you said this is a priority list?
Right, that, that's kind of what she's saying, so.
That's what I'm saying. Now, on the top section, we did just get a grant for some gifted and talented work that I can do some transitioning from middle school to high school. So, you know, here's what I'm gonna say to you. I pers, I, this is not my budget. This is the board's budget.
I understand, I understand.
So I want you to understand that, and I did invite Michael and Susan. But I, I want you to understand. I presented a budget in December. They'd made it their budget, okay? What I also want to say to you is, I think the board needs to prioritize which positions are the most important.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm just sharing you my thinking, okay? And I shared with that, with Clay today.
Yeah.
That if it was me sitting at the table, you know, that, the GT, I think we can do with the grant that we just got. Because I am always writing grants, so that we don't have to come to you for things.
Great, we gave you, if we said, I'm gonna throw out a five hundred thousand, or we said seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then it is up to do with, with, with that. So I think.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
So, so with, with being that said, there's, there's sort of, you know, we've, we've, we, we can, we can all live with, there's six posi, you know, six more jobs there that are five to six that we can do in the next couple of years. So.
You want to do a number, you want to propose a number and ask them to do the sorting? I mean, if you're at one point four, your number, counsel, would you want to come back? Is that a way to go about this, or?
Well, I think you could do that. I think what, what I would suggest is you do exactly what you said. You know, you give a number, Laura, what Laura just said. Laura, I think you're spot on. You say to the board, you know, I know you're asking for one point four. We're willing to give you seven or eight this year, with the understanding that we'll add a couple, a little bit more the following year and the following year to get blueprint in.
Yeah.
I think that's, then the board decides.
Which they're the subject matter.
Which positions they're going to determine that they will be able to, that they need, based on the board's discussion. I just don't want to make those decisions for the board. I'm, I'm just a consultant.
Yeah.
If I threw out, if I threw out a number of half, that seven fifty, with the understanding that probably we're gonna try to do one ninety through Social Services or Health Department or whatever, which actually would only end up at five fifty or five seventy-five to the actual Board of Education, understanding that those two or three positions could be funded through another mechanism, you know? Then you could, then you all could decide, without that middle section, which ones you feel you need the, the most.
And that's exactly how I think it should happen. I, I think you're spot on, Laura.
So you have a proposal, counsel, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Move the one ninety out to subcontract out those services. Where remaining balance can be given to the Board of Education to prioritize the positions.
I agree with that. I'm an I.
You can't be going closed and then discussing, since it's personal.
Well, we're not picking the positions. It's just a number.
I just want, again, one reminder that the numbers that you're looking at are salaries only.
Okay, yeah, right, yeah, we knew that. You said that. You said that. That's great.
So there's no fixed charges attached to it, so you've gotta thought about another hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
And I can get to that number as soon as I get back to the office. I can sit down to enjoy our hours and.
Okay.
While you're, while you're still sitting here, Kelly.
I'm sorry, Laura.
While you're still sitting here, there's about another approximately half a million dollars in other supplemental. Can you just give a, just a quick overview and a priority on that, from your perspective?
Which one is, which one are you referring to?
What is the supplemental, two point one million dollars, and here's one and a half of it right here?
It is, but I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Joy.
The one point four is just salaries. So if you gross, if you add benefits to that, I estimate to maybe thirty, forty percent?
Yeah, we usually do about thirty-eight or forty percent for fixed charges.
That gets you to two million, two point one million.
Okay, so then the supplemental is all.
That's what I'm, I'm. When I asked that same question yesterday, is this number or that number the same? So it's the benefits are not included in this?
So what, what, what I'm trying to, so I think that with that said, and let me share with you. And Laura, I am definitely with you on a zero-based budget, and, and we start that way. I make people come in and justify their needs.
Sure.
So with that said, I want you to know, you know, there are things that we have in the budget. We had to increase special ed nursing services, because we have some students that enrolled that are too fed or have to have a nurse, that's another couple, like a quarter million dollars. We have four buses to buy. I mean, there was more things in our budget. But at the same time, we also, you know, we made cuts in other areas, and we also wrote for some grants to take care of some things, or use some of our ESR money to take care of some things that we needed. So I just want you to know, we didn't just start with last year's budget and then just add to it. We did go back and make.
Okay. That's embarrassing. No, but I don't think anybody knows that.
Okay.
Public, public wise.
Yeah, we don't just start with, you know, let's look at last year's budget. What else do we want? You know, no, you can't, no, you can't do that. You, you certainly can't do that when you're in a business with seven hundred and eighty-six employees. I mean, you know, right there, a five percent health insurance increase is a million dollars.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
So you have to go back and you have to say, you know, what is it at the school level you can cut? What is it at the curriculum level that we can make some adjustments? Where can we use some grants for ESR funds to pay some things? So we definitely did scrutinize. I just want you to know.
Okay, so, so.
So where we are is you, on the table is seven hundred and fifty thousand.
But that's not on the table. That's just what she said.
That's what she said, so why, why don't, why don't, why don't we, if, why don't we, let's hold that discussion. And I think everybody, I think it's been a great conversation. You've helped all the council people understand where you're at and understand what you're, you're thinking, and that's what I needed.
Anytime you want me to come back next year, I won't.
I might need you every day. I might need you every day, you know?
Kelly, one, one very quick question. You mentioned just now that you might have a grant for gifted and talented instructors. What I would like is, no matter what number we come up with, if, if one of those things becomes grant-funded, you can let us know.
Oh, absolutely.
Then we cannot, then we can subtract it out of the budget, because we have a little bit of, of time.
Okay, I do. I, I will do. Will do.
Appreciate it.
As we have in the past.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
And if you come up with other questions, you know where to find me.
Can you sit out in the car?
No.
Okay, that'd be great.
Long time, long time. I'm good.
All right, thank you now.
Don't trip over the wire like half an audio.
Yeah, that'll get you.
I got two brand M M's. I don't need to be getting any other, any other issues.
Yeah, all right, thanks a lot. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Do we need to go and close, or do we just keep on going?
Yeah.
We keep on going? Okay, so can I, can I go back to this, to this sheet here?
Okay.
For this sheet here, ask question. So, that does tell him back into Laura's point.
Okay.
So if we look at the supplemental, F R twenty-three supplemental is two point, uh, two point two million. So, Joy, jump, jump in, help me out.
Okay, so the supplemental request is actually two point one one two.
Okay, so this sheet is wrong, so two point.
No, it should be.
I'm looking at this sheet right here. It says fifty-one dot one.
Yeah.
Okay, and so tell me what it should be. Don't, don't.
So, so.
What should it be?
So when you look at that two point two million, that includes the implementation coordinator.
Oh, which is a requirement.
Which is a requirement. So that's why I'm pointing you.
You got in the middle section of the front sheet, it says two point one one five six nine nine?
Yeah, yeah, let, let, Laura, let, let Cory speak for one second, because he's gotta get in his head what he's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so am I on the wrong sheet, or should I go back to another sheet?
I think, I believe you're looking at this.
She says two point two on my supplemental. F R twenty-three supplemental is two point two. I didn't have value. I didn't.
Can I give you?
Yes, yes, that would, that would help me out for a minute.
Where's, where's, I don't see two point two.
I see two point one.
What do you, where do you see?
My brain is packing.
That right there?
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Do you have that one? Otherwise, you could go.
Uh, uh, nope, nope, it is.
Yeah, okay.
It is, it is this one.
Oh, that one.
Okay, so in, in this one point one.
Two one fifteen.
Uh, the two point one.
Yeah, and that, so, yeah, that, that, this, this is the, the old one. This is the updated one.
So it's, it's. I started separating stuff, because.
Yes, correct. That's the correct amount.
I know it's not, I know it's not in there.
Okay.
Hold on.
That's, that's the correcting amount right there.
Yeah, yeah, so I, um, let me find what freaking.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Just know we have.
Yep, okay, we'll get that.
Found her.
Got it, found her.
I stayed with the gap.
There you go.
All right, so you're gonna write one now? He took yours. So maybe, so you know the number I'm talking about. So in, in, in this, in this two point one supplemental, okay? So the, um, the one point four that we have on their sheet for the twenty-three positions is baked into this one point four.
That's what Kelly just.
Okay, that's, I wanna make sure we all on the same, same, on the same sheet of paper. You know, so in this is the one point, uh, one point four without, without the Bennys.
Correct.
Without the Bennys.
Correct.
Okay, which you're saying is roughly thirty percent.
Well, she said closer to forty.
Closer to forty percent. Ken said closer to forty.
Yeah.
Okay, so what much, so what is, what is that?
She said, she said about another two, a total one, two, two, one.
Yep. Okay, so that's about another six hundred thousand dollars. And that, and that's the whole supplemental, these positions plus the Bennys.
That's what.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure we're seeing the same sheet of paper.
Okay.
So, okay, now that that, that's.
Straight.
This, this bottom section here, this blueprint, was not presented.
That way.
Can I say honesty, or can I say ethically, or can I say, you know? We were told, this is says do the blueprint.
Yeah.
Now we're hearing is not do the blueprint. We've asked, when we had Dr. Ironhorn and Sarah in here, we were told these would do the blueprint. Now we're finding out, no, they're not do the blueprint. We'd like to do them to get us to where we want to be in six years, or four years.
It's what they think they need to fully implement.
Yeah, I know, but it, it mean.
At the end of the day, they, they can, it sounded like they can.
We can save, so that, I'm, I feel like, to what you were saying, Chuck, do we need to give you four EL teachers now? If you got two up here, and you have priority one, give them the two this year. And let's see how we can break this number down a bit to get to a reasonable number. If it's not required in blueprint, then don't present, this shouldn't even been here. This label shouldn't even been here. Because it's not required in blueprint. It's to get you to where you want to be. So my suggestion, and I know we voted on this, now that I have better information, I can't vote to approve this whole eight sixteen. I can't lend my support to it. Because if it's not required, I would like to see what we can do to shave these numbers down a bit. And I'm saying eliminate the whole, you know, uh, uh, eight sixteen. Maybe to Laura's point, we say, we give you six hundred thousand minus the one, minus the one ninety.
Right.
If you wanna take some up here and some down there, have at it.
So let's just say, it's filled off what you're saying, Mr. Pack. At the eight sixteen, that's, that's where they need to be in twenty-six. So let's backtrack the eight sixteen and burst back to where we can get them to the eight sixteen, but now only give them, you know, somewhere around like two seventy-five. So what, the, the, the number, the number, the number.
Of the eight sixteen?
Yeah, yes.
Are you gonna go ahead, I'm, I'm still, I'll still give my vote for the top half here, the six, the six.
Yeah, I do. I agree.
I'll still leave my vote intact for that. I'll still leave my vote intact for the one ninety to sub it out.
Yes.
But I, I'm gonna pull my vote for the eight sixteen at this time, Mr. President, and, until, until we figure out what we're gonna need to do with that eight sixteen.
I, I would sort of, okay, go ahead.
So if, if there, do you want, do you want to simply divide that in four? Is that, is, uh, that is sixteen?
So I just did that. I just did that. So if you got the four sixty-eight plus the two, two, yeah, two hundred thousand dollars a year. Right, so that's six sixty-eight, plus, um, you know, plus some benefits, but that's still probably a little rich for our blood, so maybe it, maybe because, maybe you don't divide it exactly by four, because you really have to ramp up as you get closer. Maybe you're doing more like one twenty-five, one fifty this year, and then closer to two hundred, and, and you do a little bit incrementally more, but that'll be the next council. You know, we're still four years out, so maybe you do.
Because whatever number you give them, you gotta add forty percent to.
Yeah, so if you want to weigh two hundred, let's just give them, give them three, three twenty-five, something like that.
Right, so say make it one fifty, make, make it one fifty, so that we have like around six hundred thousand dollars plus benefits. That's kind of, and I'm actually putting something on the table. Normally, I would just say zero, right? So I'm saying six hundred K plus benefits.
Are you, are you saying that for, are you saying that for tier one and tier three? Are you saying that for the top priority and the bottom priority?
Because we've got three that want to be top two.
We're pulling the one ninety out, right? We're pulling the one ninety out.
Pulling the one ninety out.
We all agreed to do the four sixty-eight and do the one ninety on the side.
On the side.
So right now, we're just debating on how much we want to do out of the eight sixteen.
Right, right.
We're only talking about the eight sixteen.
Oh, about the eight sixteen. So how much, how much can we live with, with the eight sixteen? And, and keep in mind adding the forty, the forty percent. That's, that's.
Well, a hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus Bennys is around another two hundred thousand dollars.
So you're saying one fifty?
I mean, that's still, still a lot of money, and I still want to see what it means on the education supplement before we get to a final on this. And I think that, that might be a way, right now, what I'd like to know from Joy is, if we just did.
One fifty plus forty percent.
If you just did Kerwin, the forty-five point nine, if, if there was no supplemental, how much is the education supplement on forty-five point nine? And then we go from there and decide, how much do we want to raise people's taxes?
So one fifty gives you two ten when you had the benefits in.
So, so somewhere around between two hundred and, and two, and two fifty for the next four years, to get them to where they need to be.
Yes, if we, if we, we're backloading it by doing only a hundred and fifty now, that means, it means more next year or the year after.
Right.
So let the next council deal with that.
Thanks.
How much is the eight sixteen you're gonna give them?
A quarter, you want, you want a quarter, a third?
Two.
Well, again, they've got four years to get there, you don't have to do twenty-five percent a year.
Can we say two fifty?
Two fifty?
What do you think about two fifty?
Well, I would say one fifty plus benefits, which is just over two hundred. And they're, you know, if they're having meetings with Rick Kerwin and Rachel Ice and all that kind of stuff, they need to be lobbying the state or somebody.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I say net a, a gross, a total of two fifty out of the bottom category.
Okay, okay, let, let's.
Including benefits, right?
Including benefit, that's, that's gross.
The grand total of two fifty.
Yeah.
So that's including that benefits, Joy.
Yeah.
So whatever that works out to.
Just a point of clarification on the first two tiers, four sixty-eight, one ninety, you're approving that with benefits as well?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so that one ninety has to have plus forty percent on that, we're gonna sub that out, and then plus forty percent up here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's gonna be the supplemental money, so.
So again, I, I, based on that, I'd like, I'd like.
I'm at, I'm at, I'm at two fifty. So, hold on, Laura, we got.
Hold tight, hold tight.
Taking the vote on the two fifty.
Tier one and two, you agree with the forty percent benefits on those two tiers.
Yes.
Yes.
So we got four, we all, we have all four, do you have Laura, you?
Yeah, she, her hands are, her hands are.
She, she's tossing it, she's, yeah.
Now I want to go back to the bottom tier, you, you just said two twenty, including benefits, but I didn't see that anybody else.
I'm, I'm with it, I'm with it, we're fine.
We got four, do we have Laura's raised?
Not, but, wait, before the vote, I've, I've asked for what it means on the education supplement. We can sit here and say, that's great, we're gonna improve a million dollars, what does this mean, I would like to know.
I think we're gonna do the summary after this, right?
It reduces, yes, and it will reduce the supplemental ask.
Right, it will.
No, 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 I'm sorry, one, one cent, one penny per hundred, two and a half pennies, seven hundred.
Ah, we haven't got that far yet.
So we're gonna have that conversation, because we hope to, after we get through election board double ask, we hope to get into a summary conversation of where we are on the budget.
Right.
So that we can get some concurrence and direction from council to wrap this thing up.
Yes.
Right.
No, 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 the education supplement can't be used for the election board.
No, no.
No, we're gonna talk about the agenda for the evening. We're gonna, we, we're gonna do a summary where we're gonna talk about the penny versus two and a half cents versus none.
But that's, what I'm trying to say, that's important to me, I want to know if approving this million dollars or whatever it is, I want to know before I vote up or down, what that means to my taxpayer.
So, so decision by council, when we look at the gap that we're gonna have right now, the question, which is one point, we have two scenarios to go through. One point two five eight million dollars, because of largely the supplemental ask of the Board of Education, how much do you want to pass of that on to the taxpayer property tax through a supplemental educational piece? You know that one cent will give you seven hundred eighty thousand. Uh, we have two scenarios to look at in your packet, one is one cent and one is two and a half cents.
But these numbers have not been adjusted, right?
Now, now we have just, now council has just reduced the supplemental ask from two point one down to whatever the math is gonna show.
Down to, in the neighborhood of one point one six.
Okay, so we're now, we're now down to one point one six.
Yeah.
So that would drive you down toward, if you wanted to do a penny, it's more than a penny, it's less than two pennies.
That's right.
So it'd be one point five.
So one penny's seven fifty, right?
Seven eighty.
Seven eighty, that's close.
Um, the other thing is, we still have to pay for that one ninety plus benefit somehow, we can't do that through the education supplement, so we've got to make sure we've got enough money to, to do that. Right, if we're moving that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to a health department or social services.
Yeah.
Right, we still have to, we still have to add the money to the budget.
Right, but, but the savings that we're talking about, the nine hundred dollar savings is just, um, related to the proposed two fifty that we're moving.
No, it's also the one ninety, because where the savings are on each tier, four sixty, well, now saving, no, they passed those two.
Yeah, they passed.
So let me, and Ken helped me out with this, so we, just make sure, so we, if we're saying that on the first tier, we're okay with the four hundred sixty-eight thousand.
Right.
Plus the forty percent for the health benefits, gives you another a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars in benefits, for a total of six five five and two hundred. I'm bad at math, so you gotta double check me, so then, our bottom number, what Frank was saying, we agree with, is gonna be a total of two fifty.
Right.
Just a total of two fifty, so if you take that two fifty, plus the sixty, uh, six hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred, I'm coming up with, uh, nine thousand five hundred and two hundred dollars. That's short, nine hundred, nine hundred five thousand, two hundred, so that's short of a million dollars.
We need to back the one ninety down.
So just like Pete said.
No, I didn't add the one ninety, one ninety, I didn't, I didn't.
Or a hair over a penny. Or a hair over a penny.
A little bit over a penny, yes.
For your new supplemental.
If we, if we were just doing Kerwin, forty-five point nine, how much money would we have to put on the education supplement to get to forty-five nine?
Um, with the budget as it stands?
Yes.
If we, we, we wouldn't have to pass along any additional education support, because at this point, Laura.
Yes?
If you look at, um.
We're on the summary documents now.
Yes, on the summary.
Okay.
These are the two summary documents that you have, to talk about the overall budget.
Is that, is that the new stuff we just got?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we might as well get on that and have the conversation.
Okay, we're getting on it, okay, all right, here we go.
If you want to look at.
Here we go, neat, okay.
Two and a half.
Okay.
You want the penny?
We're gonna look at the penny.
Okay, the penny.
Right.
You have two of them, one's a penny, up top, you see education supplement, just follow there.
Yeah, okay.
And so, this document shows that when we include a penny for the educational supplement, our budget shortfall is about one point three million.
One point two five eight.
Yes, one point two five eight. If we were to reduce the budget by the two point one, if you, if you decided not to give them anything in their supplemental request.
Let's just start from there, yeah.
We'd be balanced.
Yeah.
And that backs a penny out, though.
That backs, yes, so, yep, that backs a penny out.
So if you back the penny, you lose the two point one, the race ad, when you back the penny out, we would be balanced.
Yes.
But that would give them nothing.
That would give them nothing.
Of supplemental.
Of the supplemental.
I'm just, yeah, zero base budget, just trying to get there, if we were at forty-five nine, would we need any education supplement to balance the budget?
It, no.
Even though their budget's going up by, I don't know, two or three million dollars through Kerwin? We have enough extra revenue coming in.
We have enough, we have enough extra revenue to cover.
And that doesn't include the additional four million dollar bump we just got last month, does it?
No, it does not, that, but we are including those in, those additional revenues in fiscal year twenty-two dollars. They don't really.
But it does include the eleven million dollar prior year unexpended funds.
Yes, it does.
Right, so we don't actually have enough revenue coming in, but by using it, the other, those other funds, you can balance the budget.
Correct.
Understanding that we over budget intentionally to develop a surplus to help balance the board budget, that's just a strategy that's used.
Right.
And, um, I did give you also a copy of where we stand with the fund balances.
Okay.
Oh.
Yep. And so, because our revenues have been so strong in fiscal year twenty-two, um, we won't, we will end up with a surplus, so our fund balance is even stronger than we budgeted. So at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, we're, we're anticipating that we have about fifty-nine point three million dollars available. And we are, this also does show that, um, we anticipate using eleven million dollars.
Right.
So the result is.
So, at the bottom of the budget review sheet, on, at the bottom of the budget order review sheet.
Yes.
The column fiscal year twenty-three supplemental, and right now it says two one and four four nine.
Right.
Based on what the conversation we just had, what does the Board of Education go to, one point one or nine hundred thousand?
I had nine hundred thousand.
That's what I thought you had, so that's nine hundred K, and then we have to increase the four point four nine five by a hundred and ninety plus cents.
Right.
So that number has to go up.
Are you, so when you say the number goes to nine hundred K, are you also taking out the?
Yeah.
One ninety that we're going to get up to.
Right, now we're gonna, right.
I just, I just did it like this, I just took, I just took that, times forty percent.
Yep.
Got that number, not counting that one, that goes out, two fifty, what Frank said, just added that one and that one together.
Yep.
And got nine hundred thousand, did I do that right?
Right, so then our four point four nine five goes up by one ninety plus benefits, what, what did you get the number for the, with the benefits, Corey?
Uh, nine zero five, two hundred.
The other one, the one ninety?
Oh, the one ninety, uh, two hundred sixty-six thousand even. That's using, using the forty percent, using forty percent.
Do you think the ready day fund is keeping up incrementally with the budget?
It, oh.
You haven't touched that.
That's a different question, yeah.
We should have a question. Ready day fund secure.
As, as, as a percentage of the budget.
Yeah.
It's the same, we use the same percentage.
It's a, it's a percentage, it's not a fixed dollar amount, it's a percentage, okay, good.
So the new to, the, the new total I have at the bottom now, just in that supplemental line, instead of six six one one, is five six 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 seven seven three.
Five six six one?
Seven seven three, which we would add to the one oh three number next to it, to get a new total, I think. Nine sixty-nine.
So in effect, you're taking that, that, that's, look, you're, you're reducing the budget by nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, so the new total instead of one ten five is one oh nine six.
Right.
One oh nine six.
The, the basic, the basic message that I'm getting here is that if we, if we authorize the two percent and plus a penny that we have on the table here, that we're authorized to do, that if we, uh, do a school supplement as we're proposing in that, just under a million dollar range.
Mm-hmm.
That we, uh, that we do not need to add a school supplement at all, or is that where we are?
No, so if, if we don't do a, a, if we remove, Laura's question was if we take.
Yes.
The complete request for supplemental.
Yes.
Then you don't have to add any.
I'm not sure you want to do that.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, she, that was a base for the discussion.
Yeah, no, no, so, so if we, if we put back in what, what's on the table, the four hundred sixty-eight thousand plus the hundred ninety thousand, well.
We'll back, we'll move the one ninety in the general.
We'll move that to the general fund.
And then the two fifty.
Okay, uh, so, are, at that point, we, any, any of that, that's on the school side of the budget, that's school supplemental, we should, we do need to fund through some sort of.
You will have to.
School supplement, the property tax.
Right.
So, but we're, we're in the, in the range of a penny, maybe just over a penny.
It's a little over a penny.
Okay.
Right, so with that map I just did, right now, the top number for the revenues is one oh three, three, our new bottom number is one oh nine six, so there's only a three hundred thousand dollar difference right now. So that, that's with the one cent education supplement, so, so you either leave it simple of one cent and add another three hundred thousand dollars, uh, from, you know, instead of eleven million, if you did eleven three.
That'll work.
Rather than add, rather than add more tax revenue, knowing that we just got that four million dollars, do eleven million, three hundred thousand in prior years unexpended funds, which makes your revenues at top go to one oh nine six, which matches the one oh nine six we need currently at the bottom.
So my only concern with that approach is that as we incrementally move, school funding, increases in school funding over onto the property tax side of the ledger. We've seen, we've seen the school budget grow in the last four years from forty-eight, forty-nine percent of the budget to fifty-two percent of the budget, it's gonna continue to grow as a percentage of the county budget. If we don't fully fund that increase through a school supplement, it's leaving a smaller share of the pie for public safety, for roads, for everything else that we do. And I, so I, I, what I'm proposing is that, I know it's a little bit more than a penny, but do it because you don't want, uh, tha- that creep, uh, to reduce the funding that we have for all the other county services.
You could, any normal budget time speed, I would probably agree with you, but right now people are hurting, inflation is insane, and if we've got, you know, for three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, if it was a couple million dollars, I'd be with you, but if we can keep it simple and say it's, it's a penny, um, for the public safety, so to speak, and a penny for schools, it's easy, and we've got the money in the fund balance, plus we got the extra four million dollar bump. So, you know, I don't want to put it all on the backs of the taxpayer when we have some of these additional money sitting in the fund balance, um, and we're not talking about a huge amount of money, um, to keep it, keep it simple, I want to keep the tax increase as little as possible. And the fact of the matter is, we, if we wanted to use, you know, an additional one point five million dollars of that four million dollar bump that we just got, that we didn't expect, we don't have to raise taxes at all.
So, yeah, but that's, that's a fiscal time bomb.
Yeah, that's a one year, that's a one year solution.
That's.
Correct, it is one, it's a one year fix, but it's a one year fix for a reason, because look at how much people are paying for the gas pump, look at how much people are paying, do we actually, when we know we have the fund, we got an extra four million dollars and we're already using eleven, why wouldn't we use a small percentage, thirty percent of what we just got last month that we didn't expect, and not raise taxes on our people? Because we are in a very special year with what's going on with inflation.
Social Security has changed.
It's, it, it, I just, I think we should have this discussion, I mean, yeah, we were expecting a penny plus a penny, but, and, but I'm, you know, with Joy giving us that news of the extra four million dollars, we had no idea it was coming, we could hold, we could hold off on a tax increase for one year, we could.
But then you're losing that compounded interest over time as well, Laura, so, I don't know.
Again, it's what's fair to the taxpayer, we can fund our budget.
I understand, I understand, it's just, I, I, again, my, my, my approach, I, I, I'm gonna stay with Pete, I think you do the one for one, you get the compounded entry, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's a one year fix, the next council's gonna have to do what they want to do, but I, I would say do what you need to do now, compound the interest and move on, so, that's where I am.
I think, I think this is kind of the time, the only time that we have any ability to do anything with, with the school budget, in my opinion, they're an elected body, and you either vote them out or, or vote them back in if they, if you like their budget and what they're doing, this is the time for us to step up, the only time when we can debate how that affects the community, and we decide whether to use some of our savings to address a need or increase their taxes to do it. Um, what if we did, because both sides are going up, so I think it'd be fair to hit both sides, you know, what if we did take some out of the savings to offset one of them, maybe half of, half of it, to reduce that?
You're down to three hundred, should she propose even take three hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, yeah, so one fifty's not gonna be a deal anything.
I, I, I can.
I think I just reached my pro, my proposal, I would like to discuss not doing any tax increase at all this year to help the people who have really struggled and are paying so much more for food and gas and housing and all of that, we don't need to, we've got the money. And this is a public session, people are gonna hear us say, we have the money.
All right, so.
Do it.
We, we do, but we also have some big capital projects that are coming up, and we know how expensive capital projects have increased, and when we look about, my, I'm concerned about the fund balance in comparison to the size of the, the, uh, budget that we have, and when, my first year, we went through the, the bond rewrite, we were concerned about our rating at that time, we were kind of, we were pleasantly surprised that we stayed so well rated.
And if I, and if, and if, for me, just, just piggyback, and that's the next point, if I were to use that four million, it's for those capital projects, pay, pay the capital building off.
Get it done.
Everybody's off the books, you know, dump a million on to your new sheriff's department, you know, knock that, knock what it's gonna, knock that down, I would use that money, in my opinion, for those one, those one-time capital expenditures, and just wipe them, wipe them out, do the most, if you can't wipe them out, knock them down, yeah.
Agree.
Yeah.
I agree fully. I agree, that's, that's, that's the fiscally responsible way to do this.
If you can't, if you can't wipe them out, then knock them down.
We need to pay curtail. We need to pay current expenses out of current income, and so we need to, we need to assess the property taxes to pay for the increase in current expenses.
Cause those are ongoing expenses, they don't, yeah, they don't, they don't.
They are.
Right.
So we're back to, um, a penny and us using three hundred?
So, so, yeah, yeah.
That, that's where we're back.
The proposal is to remove the penny for the educational supplement and remove the penny for the public safety.
I know, but can we revisit, Laura, where you were, can we do the penny in the three hundred? That's what we're saying.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not there, I'm, I'm gonna stay with the one on one, I, I.
You're gonna stay with?
Yeah, I, I, again, your, your ongoing expenses, Chuck, are, are.
No, remind me, remind me where we're at, then?
You're at, you're at a one cent, where that, where's the sheet?
You said a one cent. Two, two percent plus the penny.
Right.
That, right. And we were talking about a one penny education supplement.
Right.
Right. And then, what was on the table was not going above that one penny e- education supplement and, and allowing that extra three hundred thousand to?
To be taken out of, uh.
Taken out of. Essentially.
Out of fund balance.
Essentially, that's out of fund balance, yeah.
Yeah, out of fund balance.
Right. Are we, are we comfortable with that approach? I, I, I think, I, I think I'm, you're not comfortable with that?
It's only three hundred thousand dollars that keeps it even, a penny, penny for the public safety and a penny for the education. And it's, it's just an easy, it's just an easier thing, I think, to explain to the, to the public, and, and you can still tell them that we are trying to keep the tax increase as little as possible, and we're willing to use a little bit of fund balance.
Are we coming back before the twelve? Okay, I, I hear what you're saying, are we coming back before the twelve?
So, we, we're trying to get decisions, uh, council to wrap this whole thing up and present you with it.
All right.
Yeah.
Can you, can, can you give me some, some direction on, on, on the proposal as far as where you think we should go, fiscally, you are, you and Ken, on what, what we have, what you have on, on paper, offered, and then Laura's proposals, um.
And so.
I'm kind of in a gray spot.
Okay, cause we got four on board.
I don't know whether you do, if I wanna hear, I mean.
No, we do, they're, they're okay and Laura's okay with it.
Okay, do you know what you're okay with?
So just, we can recap where we are.
He just explained it to me.
So.
He just explained it. That, that, can you explain it one more time?
Sure, and, and so, as far as the revenue tax is a concern, what we're saying is that we're gonna raise the tax rate, um, it includes two percent over the constant yield, plus a penny.
Mm-hmm.
And on top of that, a one cent supplemental, a, a one cent increase for the education supplement.
Education.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, um, plus.
That's on the table, right, go ahead.
Plus we need three hundred thousand dollars from, admission, additional from the fund balance to balance the, the expense budget.
Which we're taking out of us.
Correct, the three hundred thousand is coming out of.
If, if you look at this in perspective, too, what, what, what we're, what we're doing here is actually less than the rate of inflation.
Yes.
Two percent, plus a penny, plus a penny education supplement, would, would actually leave us below the rate of inflation.
Which is about five something now.
Which is about six percent now, plus, actually seven.
Well, remember, a penny doesn't equal one percent, there's.
No, 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 you know, no, no, we know that, we know that.
No, no, it's.
Okay, so.
But, but it's, it's a little less than two percent.
But do you need a, a raise of hands so we can move on from here, so, I'm, I'm with you.
Okay.
So the three hundred thousand comes out of.
Uncomfortable with what's on the table.
Okay, so that, we can move on from that, that's done.
Laura, you're comfortable, correct?
We know what we're gonna pay for, right?
You're comfortable with that, correct?
All right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
But you didn't raise your hand, you're raising your hand, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, but doesn't mean I'm not gonna say something when we talk about the budget and not wanting to.
Well, well, you can take, you can do that, but you agree with this.
All right, so what else?
Yes.
Thank you.
What else we got, Mr. President?
Good, thank you, I appreciate it.
So, I'm, I'm gonna run and find.
What do we need to do?
Okay, is that it?
Right, that's what we need to say.
Now, now, so we got out of order here.
Okay.
All right.
When, when do we have to stay in order?
The only thing we have to talk to you about is, is the election board. The election board now has two elections.
Election board's in here?
At the end of the day, so they, they come back with a supplemental request.
Oh, boy.
Uh, we should, we should talk to you about, we need to absorb that, if we're gonna, if we're gonna support that request.
What I can say is that, you know, and both that, that's.
Do you build that in?
That's built in the, the, the other, the, the election board. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's under you. It's, it's under you.
So in your packet, you have a request to adjust up the election board request that they reserve some.
Oh, because it falls into the next fiscal year instead of the current fiscal year?
Yes, so if you review that, sorry, the budget of the summary you just talked about.
So the eighty, eighty five thousand?
Yes.
So that, we already got the cover, right?
It's already covered.
So what was that word we're talking about?
All right, okay, all right.
Right, so, so there's savings in this current fiscal year that will bump into next fiscal year, correct?
Yeah.
Then we'll be eleven, I mean, period.
Right.
Anything else?
No, sir, I think we have enough now to, uh, put together, wrap it up and present you with a budget.
Nice.
Okay.
Right?
I believe so.
So we're balanced.
Council, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Council President?
Do, do we need to revisit the question about, um, the salary requests for the library, for upper shore aging, we had said we weren't going to answer that, or have we, have we taken the cue of what we did with the county salaries and baked that back into those requests?
So council will allow us to, as long as the other agency requests don't exceed what we've given the employees here, then we'll apply that in case.
Perfect.
We'll be okay with that.
Perfect, that, that makes perfect sense to me.
Important, yes, of course.
Yeah, I mean, i- i- as long as it doesn't mess with what we just went through the last hour and a half.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't, so, so, so what I'm asking you, as long as their, their specific request does not exceed what you have approved for county employees.
No, 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 yeah, shouldn't, yeah, I know, it shouldn't, shouldn't go where, shouldn't go where we, what we already approved of, county.
And then, um.
What are you talking about, about fifteen people max, fifteen library and, and, uh.
Someone, but it's a little more than that, but.
Two people?
Yeah. Uh, we factored it in, so, as long as I have.
Okay, great.
Action, then we're good, um, we're good. Okay, so council, we'll be back, we'll, we'll be putting together a final budget for your consideration, I'm sorry.
Can I, um, can I, if I have a second, I'd like to give you an update on what happened with highways and revenues, we're in a concession, right?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, sure, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
We're not gonna be happy, we're not gonna be happy, so here's what happened. The, the, Baltimore City, the, uh, municipalities and the counties used to share thirty percent. It went down to ridiculous amounts, we're currently at three point two percent, the, the municipalities are at two point four percent, and Baltimore City is like eight point three, so here's what they did, instead of thirty percent, they did twenty percent, and it ramps up over a few years, so here's what they did, they took Baltimore City, they, full funding for that would have been twelve point one percent, they gave them twelve point two percent, so they went above full funding. The towns, full funding would have been the two point six percent, they, they went to three percent. The counties, who used to be at fifteen point three percent, were at three point two right now, they only gave us four point eight. We were expecting between seven and nine, so yes, it's a fifty percent increase, so everybody got increase, but it is so skewed, so as much work as we have put into this, I mean, it's just incredibly disappointing that the senators and the delegates did not see that everybody should have gotten equal portion of that twenty percent. So yeah, we'll see our, whatever money we're getting go up by fifty percent, but we should have been more than doubled where we are. So I just got that memo last night, they go to the, uh, the senate floor today, um, so.
What, Laura, thank?
It's something, but it's not even, neither.
Thanks, thanks for pushing that, Laura, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we do, we do, thank you.
So the only other thing.
Do we know what we are, the, did the cores, the cores vote?
So the cores is, they had the hearing today, Laura, were you able to attend the hearing?
What about cores, Laura?
Were you able to attend the cores hearing today, or do you know anything about?
Where'd y'all go?
Did you freeze?
Yeah.
There you go.
What about cores?
Um, Johnny, did the sponsor testimony, I listened to that hearing, um, they couldn't get me in, but it sounded like it went fine,